... entitled Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Private notice of this meeting was posted on October eighth, two thousand and nine. Said notice was also posted at the entrance of the Department of Education offices. Mail to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, North Jersey Herald, the News, and the Nutley Journal. Mail to the Nutley Town Sir Clark. This is an official meeting, formal action indicated. Please rise for a moment of silence in the flex room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a vote?
Mr. Franikola?
Here.
Mr. Kukta?
Here.
Mr. Murtola?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Sodder?
Here.
Mrs. Bazada?
Here.
Dr. Busan?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Zare?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to start with a presentation from our food service provider, Chartwell's. Mr. Santiago was here to make that presentation to the board to give the board and the public an update on how we're doing the school year.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year's to you all. Um, just wanted to bring you kind of up to speed where we were since the last couple of months, the last board meeting that I attended. One of the things that was spoken about was the biggest effect of change would be in the high school, and where we can make that change and make an increase is where we're retiring, so I took that apart. Since the time that I met last time, we've had a successful grand reopening of the Nutley High School cafeteria. Uh, we did a grand renovation there on November seventeenth, and a couple members were there to visit. Uh, we thought of it off as a great success. Um, and since that time, I've handed out, uh, handout there to kind of give you an idea of where we are month over month, uh, in the two intermediate schools. I'm specifically focusing on the Nutley High, I'll be brief about it. Um, starting in September, we're looking at a, a general meal per day of seventy-seven reimbursable meals per day and about a hundred and eighty dollars worth of a la carte dollars that we brought in on a daily basis. Fast forward after December, we've more than doubled those numbers to a hundred and sixty meals per day and three hundred and six a la carte dollars. Um, the daily participation pers- uh, percentage you see there are the capture rate of our population, reimbursement meals and a la carte dollars at an equivalent basis. So if you go down to the Walker Meal School, you can see that a hundred and forty-three percent is the reimbursable meals plus the eligible dollars that are there. I saw you questioning it earlier.
I think we have more than a hundred percent participation.
Basically, what I'm saying is we have six hundred and some odd students that are in the school there, and we're bringing in equivalent reimbursable meals between two hundred and fifty-eight reimbursable meals and then the six hundred and thirty-seven dollars in a la carte dollars. So it's, we're taking in more than a dollar per student effectively, or more than, more than an equivalent deal per student apparently. So repeat business coming through, so.
Somebody eats more than one meal.
Yes, exactly. Uh, so that's where that comes from. So that's just something to kind of give you an idea of where we are month over month in the two intermediate schools. Um, just empirically, everyone's been telling me that it's there last year, that the, uh, the reaction and the attendance in the Nutley cafeteria and the high school cafeteria are significantly better than they were last year, and their response will be better than it was last year. So, um, so far, everything is looking as though it's a success with the renovation, and the numbers are telling me that it is as well. So, um, that's what I'm, that's what's happened. Um, what we're planning on moving forward is, um, we've had our youth advisory committee meetings started. I had one here at John Walker Meal School with, uh, Mr. Calicchio and a few of his students. Uh, we had one just recently at Washington with Mr. Jones and his students. Uh, what came out of that meeting was, uh, Mr. Jones and I would like to use Washington Schools as a pilot program to possibly do a prepayment in terms of taking in money twice a month for those students who wish to do that. And it would, I think it would increase the participation. Everywhere I've seen prepaid, it increases participation in those schools as well as would free up a lot of man-hours for people in his office to not have to count as much money every day. If it works there, I think it'd be successful across the board. Um, we've also successfully implemented and trained our staff at the two intermediate schools on the electronic POS system where we're now doing prepayment there. Uh, we've got a much more accurate, um, documentation of reimbursable meals. We're tracking our inventory better there, so that'll help us really fine tune where we're right there and take the program to the next level with that. Along the lines of the elementary schools, I want to continue the youth advisory committee meetings there, get an idea of how we can improve the elementary students, because it's more of a closed audience, we still want to make sure that we can improve the program over there as well. Uh, so those are some of the things that I'd like to do up to, and including, um, trying to develop an a la carte program over there. Quite honestly, our students are being, I don't say discouraged, but they're left out in that they don't have the opportunity to get a small snack or a small bottle of water at their school because we don't have the, the personnel over there and the food program. So we're seeing what we can do in terms of moving around our personnel and seeing how we can do an a la carte program over there to better serve our students as well as get more money into the district. Those are some of the key points that we've done so far. More than willing to, any questions or concerns?
Any questions? Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
Hi. The numbers are going up, that, that's great to see. The same as last time. When are we going to implement the fun bag lunches in the grammar school?
Well, the grammar school lunches have gone out. We sent out the fun bag lunches. Um, they were a success. They had the little games on the, uh, on the bags themselves, the, the maps to nutrition. Um, so we have, we have implemented those, those have been a success.
When did that start?
I believe it started in the second week of November.
And did it get a choice every day?
Every day there's a choice. Um, on the menu, there is the hot meal, which is what's on the menu for that each individual day. Then there's the turkey sandwich is an alternative, there is a cereal lunch is an alternative, there is a bagel and string cheese lunch is an alternative. So every day a student can basically choose one of four lunches. I'd love to be able to do more than that, but because of the logistics of packing everything at the high school and getting it out to all five schools, we're kind of limited in those four choices. Um, we are toying with the idea of doing different alternatives each month, but those aren't, tend to be the tried and true ones that, that the kids are looking for.
Do you, uh, do we have a projection, or can we assume to have a projection, of where we'll wind up the year, whether we have a deficit, have a good deficit, you know?
Absolutely. Um, with regards to our operating statement, um, and what our above the line costs are in terms of Chartwell as a whole, we are in progress right now. Now, I, I don't have access to what the overall.
Maybe, you know, with the business, between you and the business administrator, we can, you know, put together so that we, we know where we're going to wind up. Uh, we have a certain budget in mind, where we're going to be relative to that budget.
Anyone else? Mrs. Russo?
At the grand reopening of the high school, the principal there, Mr. Catterbone, came up with an idea of having a to-go lunch for the students that wanted to get outside. Have we started anything on that?
Yeah, we have, um, it's called an outtake session right now. Uh, Mr. Catterbone and myself had spoken about that, um, leading up to the, to the grand reopening. So it was certainly something that was on our radar up until that point. Um, the two open-air refrigerators are outtake sections. Those are always packaged to-go, so it's a yogurt parfait cups we have that can be grab-and-go. We have prepackaged salads, we have prepackaged sandwiches. We have, um, as you've seen at Starbucks, a bagel, cheese, and fruit platter that somebody could grab that's a reimbursable meal, as well as the grab-and-go drinks. Um, what we're looking to do to make it a true grab-and-go system is where the students don't have to stand at the line in order to pay to get some sort of prepayment in place. Um, that's something that we haven't figured out the logistics to make work. Um, as of right now, a student can go in and grab something as, as fast as they can make a decision in that refrigerator, they can grab something and get online. Uh, what Mr. Catterbone and I were talking about was almost like an EZ Pass system where they can have something that's pre-bagged, ready to go, and go outside. I think the, the hesitancy to always having a to-go type function in a high school was his reluctance to have the children or the students hanging around outside and meandering about with the noise and the blu- uh, the littering type of issue. Um, so he and I are working hand in hand and figuring out the logistics to kind of make that happen most of the time.
Are we going to investigate the possibility of putting the picnic tables over in that park area and the legality or liability for that? So the kids can go out there and eat their lunch when it's nice weather? Are we going to do that?
We need to do that before you're in. We need to investigate that before we actually do it.
Right. We're in the process of doing that, that's what we're getting at.
Yes. Yes.
Last issue. At the last PT council meeting, quite a few of the concerns from the PTers were various satellite tools, that the temperature of the hot meals wasn't hot. I spoke with our superintendent, and we know our hot boxes were new last year, but we, we found out that the travel time from start to finish is an hour and fifteen minutes. Is that correct, Mr. Zare?
Oh, that's it, an hour and fifteen minutes.
So we have to come up with some kind of alternative to get the food to the schools faster. Now, is that a Nutley employee? Is that a Chartwell's employee?
That is our, are one of our schoolless drivers with the hands transporting. If I may ask, is that food coming out of the high school or the middle school?
The food that's coming, that's going to the elementary schools is coming out of the high school. Uh, the way that it works right now is we have two satellite schools, which are the Melville Therapeutic School, as well as the Bluefield Early Learning Center, are being satellated out of the middle school here, and the five elementary schools are being satellated out of the high school. Just kind of data-like process what's happening is we're taking it out of the ovens and packing it ASAP in the, in the preplate compartments. Because we don't have, uh, food service workers on site, we can't send things in bulk, which would obviously indicate a little bit better, a lot better, so we have to prepackage and the, the temperature goes down at a much more rapid pace. So we put it through the insulated boxes. The boxes that they travel in are strictly insulated, they're not a heated unit, so it's as fast as our driver can get them from point A to B, C, D, E, and F. So the first way we'd be getting them at, at a much higher temperature and giving more time to get them into the hot boxes. So if they get ten minutes out, they now have an hour to keep them in those hot boxes. The last school that's there, they've been on the truck longer in those insulated boxes and have less time than having to keep back up in those hot boxes. So right now it's just a legitimate issue of how we're working to get the lunches there quicker.
Is that something we can explore? I would say if you could just stop by the office tomorrow, we can meet with Mrs. Holly with the transportation coordinator and hopefully come up with some more efficient options.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Have a minute.
Okay, Mr. Zare?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we have two, uh, very brief proposals for board approval for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven school year. One is to take our current computer applications course, which has certainly been a topic of conversation for quite some time now, and, uh, move that to a happier course. Uh, in that course, students learn, uh, basic computer concepts, they work with Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Publisher, and, uh, they deal with, uh, internet research and, uh, critical internet skills. What we propose to do is to make that a happier course, and in the other happier year introduce the financial literacy course, which deals with, uh, very basic money matters for high school students. We deal with money management skills, financial knowledge, creating and maintaining monthly budgets, researching college costs, financing options, checking, savings, credit and debit cards, car insurance, and investing. Uh, this is being mandated by the State Department of Education. We have been, uh, working, and, uh, Mr. Soder deserves the credit, we have been working with the high school, uh, staff, the principal, on a series of assemblies to at least give children some understanding of financial matters before this course goes into place in September. And again, uh, I think this is a result of some of the very big mistakes that young people are making regarding credit, credit applications, financing, and the incredible amount of debt that young people are coming out of college with. At least if, uh, they have a basic understanding of, uh, how money is used and sometimes misused, it will serve these children well. These are both in the business department. We are still, uh, discussing, and we will continue to move towards bringing a larger computer applications course down right through the middle school into the elementary school level. When the, uh, computer applications course was created some time ago, it was really, really very few, many, uh, people in the community had home computers. Uh, now everybody's on their third, fourth generation laptops, GPS systems, autopilots, technology has grown immeasurably in the last decade or so. So we want to make this course more relevant and, uh, bring it down to a younger grade level so that students can grasp these concepts with computer applications earlier and it will serve them well in the coming years. It's a question of space, we'll be working with the elementary principals to figure that out. And those are the two presentations I have offered.
Thank you, Mr. Zare. Uh, before we get to hearing citizens and resolutions, I'd like to note, have everyone note that Superintendent Resolution Number Five has been removed from the agenda. Business Administrator Board Secretary Resolution Number One has been removed from the agenda. So, now that we said that, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we have a hearing of citizens on resolution items only. Board rec, relate regulations a lot, twenty minutes for these communications, whose persons shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask to try to stay within the requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all those wishing to speak on the topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to the chair, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded to come to the microphone to state your name and address. Anyone who wishes to be heard on resolution items only.
Good evening, Mr. President. Al Thomas, uh, one zero eight Kinley Street, Nutley. Uh, Board Secretary Resolution Number Two, the approval of Bruno Associates for grant funding services. Uh, I was wondering, was that put out to bid, Mr. President? And why was Bruno selected?
We went out to RFPs. We had established the meeting to interview all board members in the town. We interviewed both applicants, and the role of the board was to, uh, just not reach out.
Bruno's always experienced in, uh, making, uh, grant applications for government entities, to government entities. Was the other applicant experienced in, uh, making applications and grant applications to private companies?
That's not exactly accurate.
I'm just going by what Bruno's website says.
No, what was presented to us, he has, uh, experience in the education field, and he had an individual for the staff who's in fact, uh, trained in that and does that for his company. And she presented as part of the interview, a list of grants that Nutley would need to be eligible for, so they showed, uh, ample knowledge and potential to pursue grants. So I don't know.
I, I'm just talking with the website says, that's what, just do.
I didn't interview the website and, uh, to be interviewed the company.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on resolution items only? Okay, so.
May I ask another one then, Mr. President?
Yes.
You have twenty minutes. I have no questions. Uh, the resolution, Superintendent Resolution Six and Seven, the stuff will be the training under the handle of the care program?
Yes.
Uh, I'm wondering, uh, what was the, uh, criteria for selecting these teachers and aides? Are they from any particular department and particular group?
They are all from special services, and they all have daily contact with special needs students.
Uh, two days of training, uh, done, the verbal and the physical?
Yes.
Programs?
Yes.
So our teachers are, are, and aides are going to be trained in how to physically restrain students?
In a proper and correct manner. And that is paid for by IDA and moderate grants.
Including the expenses?
Yes.
The expenses, it's a hotel and travel?
Not the, not my knowledge.
Just travel. Contact states, just travel.
Just travel.
The hotels were any of the going back?
Yes. And then many of these people will be certified and then be trained others as the.
Is that a party program?
Yes, it is.
All right, good. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else who should be heard on resolution items only? I can't see anyone else. I think that we should be, uh, just cut to the June Superintendent Resolutions One, Two, uh, seven, except for number five, which is the rule. Yes, Mr. President. Respect to Superintendent Resolutions Three, Four, Six, and Seven, I saw, I presented. Sorry. Second by Mr. Soder, a discussion. See if they can call the room.
Mr. Franikola?
Yes.
Mr. Kukta?
Yes.
Mr. Murtola?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on all on number seven, I am staying specifically to Carmelo Montaliero.
Mrs. Sodder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bazada?
Yes.
Dr. Busan?
Yes. Mr. Soder, would you read Business Administrator's Resolutions Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six?
Yes, Mr. President. Let me move Resolutions Two through Six as ready, so.
Uh, another second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russo. We want to note that on number two, the resolution reads for a period of twelve months instead of two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year, and subject to attorney review for language and specificity. What that means is, uh, because this is done on a commission basis, any grant that we now normally get will not be included in anything, uh, that the, the bond cap, the, um, Bruno Associates claims to bring to the district. Has to be something brand new, can't be something that's already, um, been approved by the school. A discussion.
I have a couple things to discuss. Um, first, you stated that, I missed the last meeting when we did the interviews. So in our minutes show, we had a vote taken on this, uh?
No.
There was no vote taken?
No. Every vote has to be in public.
How did we determine Bruno as the, uh, was a consensus taken?
We had a discussion, a consensus of discussion. What the majority of board members felt around the presentation.
So how did you, you took a handful?
No, we talked to each other around the table.
Okay. So it was just a matter of talking, no voting?
No, formal vote, Bruno's done.
Not a formal vote, a consensus.
That's what we're doing tonight.
But I wasn't done?
And there's no guarantee we're going to get enough votes to pass this time. That's the purpose of doing it in public.
Uh, when this resolution goes up, uh, the fact that Mr. Allen mentioned in not being able to, I guess you'd say lobbyist, um, if this company was to, if it was for legal, was to en- engage in that type of, uh, did that have any effect on us as a, uh, receiving grants?
I didn't hear your question.
Question is that if they're not registered lobbyists, and if they did interact in that type of, uh, ways of acquiring grants, does that have an effect on the town of Nutley, that receiving them as our school? If there was to be some type of a problem? Little council?
If you'd like me to respond, what I suggested is that I, uh, give a review of any contract that's entered into with Bruno Associates for grant writing. Uh, there was an issue raised as to whether or not they can take it on a commission basis. Uh, I indicated to the board and private executive that I would certainly oversee the execution of the contract to make sure it complied with all legal requirements.
Okay. Now, that, that five thousand dollar signing, is that something that made this legal for them to do that? Is that what we're saying?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay, and how do we find that that's a, an actual factor? How do we look into that? Is there someplace where we can investigate?
Well, I think the investigation has been, uh, reposed in my, as my responsibility before we, I asked them to qualify the resolution this evening to say that it is subject to a board council approval. Uh, if the resolution were to pass, I would then get involved with the contract to make certain that in fact the contract complies with law before we become a finished or final act.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, well.
Yeah, I think we should be honest, too. A good part of our, um, uh, discussion was cost, you know? So actually, that played a big part in selecting Bruno.
Yeah, I just, I'd like, for the record, to say that I was not impressed with Bruno's presentation and, and what they could do for us, and had concerns whether they would, uh, that they should be our grant writer.
Any questions, comments? Call the room.
Mr. Franikola?
Yes.
Mr. Kukta?
No one number two, yes, um, three through six.
Mr. Murtola?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodder?
Yes.
Mrs. Bazada?
Uh, no one number two, and yes on three, four, five, and six.
Dr. Busan?
Okay, this portion of the meeting, we come to a hearing of citizens on any school matter. Uh, once again, regulations are thirty minutes. Try to keep your comments limited to three minutes, and we ask to try to stay within that requirement. Please remember to state your name and address when we come to the mic, and all comments go through each ear.
Good evening, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Robert Rosignol, alongside president. To respond both to you and to the group that came out a couple of public meetings ago, set the record straight from my point of view in regard to the Spring Garden School principal misunderstanding. Since this principal has publicly placed me at odds with the facts, I feel that I must tell you exactly what the facts are, because only one of us is correct. Also, I am doing this now because it's taken far too long for the truth to come out, and there have been far too many public misstatements allowed, and I can no longer be silent. I have done my best to discuss these things behind closed doors to protect private as well as public interests, in particular those of this board, which I greatly respect. I will not discuss personnel issues tonight, just the facts in terms of the true sequence of events. When I appeared before this board over the past months to ask simple questions about simple matters, the administration was good enough to answer them directly. Then came a point when school leaders incorrectly felt that my questions were headed in the wrong direction, and stopped me before recognizing that my statement could be made in public. They did agree instead to meet with me in private to resolve the issues that I had raised. For me, this handshake of sorts didn't work out too well, because even after being told that I would soon hear answers to my question, there never was a follow-up call or get-together. I was also criticized for having a relationship with N-FAN, the Nutley Public Advocacy Network, when the simple truth is that I have never had an ongoing relationship with that group, and I'm not privy to any of their business. My only connection at the time was that after the board had scheduled to meet with me on a Friday morning a couple of months ago, I asked about who would be there. I got no response, so to protect myself, inquired if my situation was one that might be of interest to N-FAN, and would it be appropriate for them to have a member sit in my meeting with board officials as a witness only, not as a participant. They agreed, and I was very pleased, as board officials did have their attorney present, who participated throughout. Was I ambushed? I don't know, but I'm very grateful to N-FAN and feel very good about my participation in the meeting, even though, as I said before, I never did get the follow-up information that I was promised. Again, I remind you that I never violated the confidentiality of this matter, as I had promised school officials throughout many, many months of our discussions. Instead, I have heard that some employees of the district have not taken this matter as seriously as they should have, and in fact violated the rules of confidentiality and the laws themselves. I have also been aware that the youngster who was seriously injured and his family have been discussed publicly by some of these professionals, and warned that this too is a very serious matter. Further, some of these employees have stirred the pot sufficiently to bring out a group of supporters of the principal to the meeting that I mentioned above to praise her good works, which were never in question. This was actually another attempt to distract from the real issues of violations of public policy. policy and of the trust that we place in our public employees. These excuses include references to the supervision of student teachers, project renewal, et cetera, and are all bogus. Along the same line was the public statement by the principal and the recent addition of the Nutley Sun that I was misinformed. She had no business making a public statement of this kind or encouraging the maroon plaid t-shirt wearers to protest, again implying that I had done her wrong. I don't blame the good people mostly who came out to support their principal and it is generally a good thing to do, but in this case, they were deliberately misled for the wrong reasons. They had no idea, as I have said before, of the blemishes that she has amongst her many good deeds and they were told more lies to get them out to a public Board of Education meeting. Also, the cheerleading that I've had to endure is not that hard to deal with as I know that many of those on the other side, if I can call it that, really have no way of knowing the full story. I have in my possession almost everything that I need and I've shared just enough of these things with board members and the administration to let you know that I have the facts. Each, by the way, and to the degree investigated, has proven to be true. Still, nobody knows everything that I have and the reason for this is that I would have been torn to shreds if I had told my story piecemeal. This leads me to tell you that just recently, one of the INs, someone who I do consider a friend and trust, told me that I was losing my credibility because I had not presented any proof of wrongdoing and that I'm just creating problems by suggesting things without the facts to back them up. I explained why I disagreed and that I have presented many facts to school officials over a period of time. Further, in her own hands, on October 31st, 2008, the principal signed official documents acknowledging the assault and injury to the youngster and as such, the neglect of filings, any of the required reports in a totally dishonest way. Thus, the lies and cover-up. My point is that these confessions have largely been denied or ignored until now. This bothers me greatly and brings me to this meeting tonight because I have been 100% honest with you and I have done my best to keep the administration and much later the board informed of what I was doing, why I was doing it, and what I thought you should know. Along the way, I presented very clearly what the principal had done wrong in this. The first stage of what I think of as a two-stage problem and cited policy, regulation, and statute numbers to simplify the administrative review. I stated how the lies and cover-up made matters worse. I reported that things happened sequentially and after the initial set of problems was allowed to happen, leaks from the other side simply made things worse for the principal and for the district. As time went by and more learned of this issue, I was provided more information from various sources. These problems of the other side have led them, from what I see, to try to undermine my position in any way possible. In conclusion, I am disappointed and it is said that this has been allowed to get so far out of control. As discussions of this matter were ongoing since the occasion of the incident on May 14th, 2008, the state deadline for filing was a month later on June 30th, 2008. I was also told on a number of occasions that the principal was spoken to and that all would be reported appropriately. This turned out to be inaccurate and this stuff was allowed to go on for months, which resulted in more stonewalling and a phony updated unsigned memo to file late August, 2008 or September. By I said the principal. This was also a furious defense of the person created who I know has done many things that should not have been done. I have in my hand three copies of this report, the medical and police reports, the phony reports, much of the correspondence between me and the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, and the Essex County Executive Superintendent, to whom I have filed two formal complaints. Some of you have seen these and I have offered them to all of you. These copies are for the Nutley Sun, the Nutley Journal, and NJ Hometown for their review. Much of this information has also been included with an appeal to that filing with the New Jersey Government Records Council regarding a denial of access complaint for Oprah records that I have requested from this board with copies to the custody of school records. Finally, I am told that this is not the first time that this principal's attendance has been questioned and brought to the attention of the superintendent. I don't know if you can comment on this, but I thank you very much for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
It's inappropriate for us to comment, but would you mind leaving us next thing? Anyone else who wishes to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Thomas, I want to thank you for the disparaging letter that you wrote about me. To use the words of FDR, "I'm proud to have earned your disrespect."
Oh, I need that. You gotta come, no, that's okay.
Lisa Dancheck-Martin, 160 Southway Avenue. I noticed from the August 24th minutes and also the September 14th minutes, both meetings started before the advertised time. They started before 6 o'clock. One started at 5:43 and the other started at 5:40, which is not in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. And I was just wondering why?
I dispute that. I looked very carefully at the clock. As you saw tonight, we sat here for three minutes waiting to be told it was time to start the meeting, so we will look into the record-keeping. If you want to provide me with whatever documentation you have that says that, I'd be very happy to look into it for you.
Well, the minutes that you guys approved, you say that it started at 5:43 and the other one said it started at 5:40. And that a public meeting was held before 8 o'clock.
When a public meeting is advertised or closed, it was very mindful to start right now. It may have been a special meeting that was...
No, it wasn't. It was not a special meeting. And on the website, it says that the board meetings are supposed to start at 6 o'clock, go right into an executive session at 6:05, and then have an open public meeting at 8 o'clock.
That's correct.
The minutes stated that you started at 5:43 went directly into a public meeting.
Yeah, never happened. It could be a misprint. It could absolutely be incorrect in the minutes and it was absolutely...
This was the meeting that you told...
Looking for the right word. It was irresponsible of us not to read all those minutes before we approved them, but we don't do that. We have never done that while I sat in this chair. I'm a very active clock watcher. If anything, we've been a few minutes too late.
Mr. President?
Sometimes we're here and we're waiting for the recording device to be hooked up. That made delays.
I have copies of the minutes. I'll show them to you.
Okay. My recollection is, and I don't know which dates they were, but there were a couple of meetings where we scheduled to start at 5:30.
Well, if we scheduled, yeah, we had...
And we do tend to, have a tendency of starting late.
Yes.
Like 6, 10, when it's supposed to be 6. So I don't know.
And if anything, we're starting later in order to get everything in place, the recording equipment, everybody in their seat, but we have never started before an advertised meeting. But I will look into it. I mean, if you want to give, I would certainly look into it because that is something that should look into.
August 24th meeting and that's with the presentation for the Middle Eastern course that you had, that you said you, in one of the meetings that I was here, you said you went directly into a public meeting and it was early and you came up here to see if anyone was here and no one was. And this is September 14th.
There may have been, there may have been meetings that we've had in the conference room and they were advertised that way or no one was here. That may have happened.
Well, if no one is, how are we supposed to know if it doesn't, if it starts before 8 o'clock or before 6 o'clock? We're just supposed to show up at 8:5 and go down to the boardroom and just hope for the best?
No, we start as advertised.
Well, obviously, this was not started as advertised though.
We will look into it.
Okay. Because there is a fine for each individual person on the board if, if it's not in compliance.
Absolutely.
$100 for the first one and up to $500 for the second. And each individual who approves it is also held.
I'm going to pay my fine.
Well, you can pay my fine.
It's a serious issue. If anything, if I recall, as I said, we usually start a few minutes late, if anything. I don't ever recall starting early, but we will absolutely look into it.
Okay.
Yes. Excuse me. Does he have the first sheet that says when the meeting's supposed to start? And if that's what you need, you need to give that.
It could have been a 5:30 start.
Yes.
Or even a 5 o'clock.
Yeah. And we've had some early starts advertised, advertised as such.
Well, the minutes say that it was from the memo, I think the, that went to the newspaper in, what was it, April 27th or whatever. So it was the normal, you know, the normal time that it was advertised at. It wasn't a special meeting.
There are times when we have special meetings. There are times when we change the time of the meeting and that's always advertised in compliance with the law, the number of days ahead of time that were required.
Okay. I understand that, but these were not the case.
Yeah. We'll look into it.
You're heading 31 Terrace Avenue. I haven't been here in a while, so I don't know if this is where we stand on this. Do we have a CO for this building yet?
Do we have a CO for the middle school?
Right.
Do we have a CO for Mr. Zara?
Mr. Nicoletti is indicating yes.
We do. It's a permanent CO for now. It's not a, it's world open. Okay. Thank you.
Mike Kingley, Novak Street. Mike Russo, that'll be mainstream. Doctor, I have a two-part question. Doctor Pissau, can you tell us where we are with the committee, the search committee for a new permanent business administrator?
We will, I will be sending a letter out to meet by the end of, before the end of January. I still have people submitting letters. I don't want to miss anybody. Probably meet in this building and I'll send it out, email and hard copy to make sure we're just here.
The second part of my question would be towards Superintendent, Mr. Zara. Should that search committee be expanded to include a new superintendent in the near future?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, see, anyone else that closed that portion of the meeting? I see on the, on the agenda, of course, for the term, usually this person of the meeting we have, if anyone has any old business to bring up? Anyone have any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have some new business. As you all know, I have been addressing the issue of whether it's worthwhile for this district to stay in the New Jersey School Board Association. I believe that the time has come for us to start looking at ways to save money. I have not gotten a satisfactory answer in the past as to what benefits we derive of paying $25,000 to $30,000 a year in membership dues. Since our last discussion about this, Assemblyman Bruce Accelli from Gloucester County and Assemblyman Scolera have built before the assembly, which will make membership into New Jersey School Boards Association an option. Right now, it's one of those mandated state bureaucratic expenses that we have no choice but to pay dues into. Now, the only thing that I have seen since I've been on this board is those of us who are on this board have gone to conferences, a few have gone to Atlantic City, a few have gone to Princeton, and we still have to pay, the school district still has to pay for these, the expenses of these conferences, one or two. So I'm going to ask this board to have a little bit of a discussion tonight with the goal of voting to support the bill to make, to make membership an option. I'm not asking at this time to withdraw from the New Jersey School Boards Association, but I'm asking that this board support the bill to give us the opportunity to pull out, if we want to, from mandated to not mandated.
Yes.
I think that the bill is asking the wrong question. The question shouldn't be whether it is mandatory or optional to be participating in this School Boards Association. If, because, and the reason I say that, if it is optional, then you are guaranteed a slow death for the organization because just as people are looking to save money, they will withdraw and the revenue coming into it will decline over a period of time to a point the School Boards Association cannot function in an efficient fashion. So the real question is not to be, not whether it's optional or is the School Board Association worth having? My personal opinion on that is yes. I think that they were, not only did we go to the conferences, but as we participated in negotiations, they provided a wealth of information as to where other districts are with respect to benefits, where they are with respect to settlements, infrastructure. There are legal issues that have been consulted with. They provide legal, legal advice to all the boards. Now, if they're, I don't know what they're budgeting, save $17 million. The, you know, maybe that, and they are governed, I believe, by districts. And there's a board of directors and, you know, maybe the appropriate thing is the board of directors saying, "Look, you've got to cut your budget by 10% or 20% instead of spending $7, $10, $5." But I think that from my perspective, what I've seen over the term I've been on the board is that they are a valuable organization and that if you were to make it optional, that, that, that would jeopardize the existence of the organization.
Yes, Mrs. Russo?
I think this proposal also brings up a few more questions. First and foremost, will they also eliminate the mandatory training requirement for all school board members? If they don't, can we get this training? I haven't been able to find any other place in the state that provides school board training except for the New Jersey School Boards Association. And if it's optional to be a member, what would they then charge those school districts that are not members for training services? I'm having a feeling that that would be a resorbant charge if we choose not to belong. In our packet that we get, it states the current dues formula ensures that no district pays more than 1/10 of 1% of its current expenses and average payments statewide are closer to 1/20 of 1%. So I think this brings up a host of additional questions. It's a step in the right direction eliminating these unfunded mandates, but it's not enough. I agree with Mr. Kupka. It brings up too many questions.
So Russo, the answer, I guess, to try to capitalize the question, so it's a good question. I think when you take something that is mandated and make it not mandated, you're opening up the avenue of competition. I mean, there could be other organizations, other training organizations that will compete with them. I just think that to strap us with a $25,000 a year bill where we could perhaps, as Mr. Soder has suggested many times, you know, buy some of these things that we need à la carte, makes more business sense. You know, I just can't see now, a four-year period is $100,000. Eight-year period is $200,000. It's a, it's a lot of money added up. And again, I personally don't see the worth of spending this money year in and year out to this district. If somebody else does, I certainly respect your opinions, but I just think mandated, to mandate us to do something is not the way to go. If, if this organization, the New Jersey School Boards Association, is worth its while, if it is valuable, then the doors of that organization will be knocked down by school boards around the state to support it and to stay in. If it is not doing what the school boards and the taxpayers expect it to do, then let it die a death. I'm not here to save an organization. I'm here to try to help save tax dollars and to try to bring more funding into this district. And this is just one avenue that I think we should take.
Well, if somebody helped me out, you said that they supplied legal help, then why do we have a lawyer? I don't understand it.
Well, just to respond to that, well, I've called numerous times. This is the last thing you get from them. Well, you've got to call your attorney because they're the ones that represent. So in my opinion, that supports Stephen a part of it is because I don't think they provide any legal expertise close at all.
I was like, Steve, what Mr. Kupka says, I agree with you, there may be some things that we have to pay for that are mandated, but to get rid of it totally, when you're looking at budgets, you're looking to cut money, of course, everyone's looking at that one first. And if every district around looks at it to cut it, then it won't be existence. around looks at it to cut it, then it might be resistance. I don't see that. I also don't think we should be involved in politics. You never know, we might come back and play us.
I agree with my colleagues that we should stay in it. What I agree with Steve is that they should knock that cost down for $25,000 in this day and age, in which everybody's getting hit left and right with cutbacks. They should also cut back. It's similar to the NJSIAA in athletics. We don't have to belong to it. We don't have to participate with them. They charge us a fee and all, but in order for our kids to get recognition, in order for our kids to play in the state tournaments, we must be a member. That's similar to that problem, what they're doing here. I agree, if the stakes are high, we want to save the taxpayers' money. I definitely agree on that. But the key thing is, let them lower their entry fee or whatever fee we pay to them, and I'll agree with them.
Maybe, Steve, if you don't have to belong, and it's free competition, they will lower their fees. Without free competition, I don't think there's a chance in the world that they would. Why would they? I would assume the bill is still in committee, and I doubt Bernie Sanders came back, committee on the floor before the governor-elect is sworn in, and he himself has said he wants to do away with all the funded mandates. Let's see what he does.
I have to come back, I mean, if there's issues with quality of service, there are issues with level of cost, that the governing body of the School Boards Association will be worked in their attention and have them fix it. That's the pressure, that's where the pressure point has got to be. But I think that in the long run, it's an organization that is worthwhile. Is it as efficient as it should be? Probably not, and we should take action to get them to be more efficient and more cost-effective.
Well, I think they're going to find that out, and right now, we have so many of the state talking, so we can't take a position on it, because it is a good option. So by that time, let's see what they say, let's see what the governor does. That's one of his main things that he was talking about with education, unfunded mandates, which I've supported for a long time, constantly getting advantage from the state they don't fund. So let's see what he does.
Just to piggyback on what you're saying, Senator Brucielli did the same thing with the NJSIAA. They were spending a lot of money on state tournaments, in which we, the people, were paying extra dollars to go see these events. Now they've cut that cost right there because of this gentleman. I think that this type of pressure from the legislature may affect the change that we're talking about. So I mean, I don't see any harm in supporting it, or maybe sitting down with Senator Scolera, getting a little more information, having him get our input as a school board, or what some of our concerns are. I wanted to say something, what was in that newsletter, and I'm by no means correcting you, Mrs. Russo, at all, but I just want to bring to the attention that 1/10 of 1% of our budget is $60,000. When they break it down into percentages like that, they make it sound like it's really not a lot of money. $60,000 is an awful lot of money in this budget for someone to mandate us to have to pay, so.
Do we pay $60,000?
No, it's a $60 million budget, all right? Not more than, but I'm saying, it's still a lot of money. If it were at that max, it's $60,000. That's two teachers. That's a teacher and a half, that's a program, that's, you know, benefits, we talked about, we talked about saving money. $60,000 goes towards something other than education.
Mr. President, what I'll do is, I'll get more information from both assemblymen, I'll bring it back to the board, and this is a good discussion. But as an individual board member, let me make this clear, for I'm not charged for having a CNN moment. As an individual board member, I will be helping lead the fight around the state to get this, representing me, elected Steve Rogers, trustee school board, not only Board of Education, to have this bill passed to support it. So I just wanted to make that clear. But thank you for your input, and I'll get more information for you.
Any other new business? Seeing that there was motion to adjourn. One second. Mr. Francoa, your hand favor. Aye. Your turn.
Didn't have to use another table.